Everybody please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Board Secretary, this meeting has been advertised in the course field of public media.
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
A roll call, please.
Mr. Baltham.
Here.
Mrs. Backer.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Rapoia.
Here.
And Mr. Mackinon.
President. Close session.
This evening in closed session, the Board of Education discussed under attorney-client privilege, SCA tenure charges, SC- uh, SCA grievances, under negotiations, SCA contract, under student discipline, give reports thirty-nine through forty, two thousand twelve thirteen.
Thank you. Before we begin our presentation, I just want to acknowledge we have some special guests with us here this evening. We have fifth graders from the upper elementary school that are attending the meeting tonight. They're going to be taking notes. And our next meeting on March 5th, they're actually going to serve as board members and administrators under a program called the Children's League. So I want to welcome you here tonight, take good notes, and hopefully, next, uh, next meeting, you'll prove that we are not smart fifth graders. So Dr. Afan, we have a presentation.
Yes, sir. Ms. DeSantis, will you come up and with your trusty assistant there, and assistants, plural, Ms. Sandy? I asked Ms. DeSantis to do us a presentation on technology in the classroom and how it's used. And I hired Ms. DeSantis many years ago, and I'm very happy that she's still with us and doing a very good job. So Ms. DeSantis, without further ado, would you make a presentation?
The second one is a history one. We're good to go, thank you. I think you can come over and use this just as a relax. It wasn't that many years ago making a deal. This was made this year in seventh grade.
It's been two years.
Two years. And we'll start class. Okay. Katie Larra is here with me, she is the librarian at the school. We have one more to share with you. We want to show you what we've been doing with i-movies in the classroom. We've done a traditional book trailer, we've done a history movie, and we branched out last week into science. As I tell the children, if you cannot see, please move, or I will gesture a head for Who thought protos could be so exciting? But I'm sure that you'll appreciate that once you watch this film. you. So if you guys can't see, if I'm blocking, I'll move, but we really want you to see their This is an eighth grader made this. An eighth grade teen made this. work. All right. So I'm going to start with a movie. Applause. All right, thanks. This is the first movie made, the sixth grade language art. And like Barbara DeSantis said, my name is Katie Larra. I'm the middle school librarian. And I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about some of the feedback we've gotten I'm going to show you three, so you can get an idea of what the movies look like. from students and also teachers. This is a traditional book trailer. So what are students saying? Since I put the images together, I feel that I now have a better understanding of the historical events. I made the movies, and since I did the work, I feel I own it. I clearly remember the text and the images, and I know the material. It was an informational lesson and an amazing learning experience. And then a little bit about what the teachers said. It combined a variety of different skills, literacy comprehension, summarizing, identifying main details, and incorporating technology correctly. They were really proud of their trailers. And that was by Christina Quinteros, who's a language arts teacher. The project was a great tool for reinforcing classroom content. My students had a great deal of fun making their American Revolution trailers, and I don't believe they will ever forget this activity. And that was by Carl Barrier, who's a history teacher. And finally, students were on task at all times, completely engaged, and worked together as they created book trailers better than I could have imagined. And that's by Lori Bellotti under. The movie trailers turned out great, and the classes can't wait to make another trailer. They suggest that we make one for each chapter. That was Claire Craft, history. Amazing, the quality of the movie trailers and the students' abilities to convey their knowledge of the student of the subject of civil rights and the fashion of multimedia by Pamela Charatok, a history teacher. So where we were, last year, we had few images, we didn't have a lot of student planning, and we only managed to reach one teacher. So far this year, we've got an online album of pictures, which has made life so much better. We've got better plan plates and planning, we've got a lot of rubers, and we've already reached twelve teachers. And when I say twelve teachers, it's twelve teachers oftentimes six classes. So I started out and made twelve movies, but we didn't make twelve movies. We reached twelve classrooms six times. However, I am seeing, I go to sleep at night, I can hear these soundtracks walking through my head. Next one. Standards. They're fun, they're great, but they're standards-based. It covers the technology standard eight point one, as well as the content-specific standards, either in English, or in history, or in science. Our limiting factors, I am not an Apple person by birth, but I have to admit that the product that Apple makes for movies is phenomenal. And it only works on an Apple machine, so it's on a Mac or an iPad. So we're really limited to how many movies we can make by our access to those. What we're doing to really extend the learning experience, we have, Katie has done, for every movie, she's made a QR code. So for example, the protos movie made a QR code, the attachments at the back of the library book, and in the library, Chris has helped us out by setting the webcam, the kids can scan the back of the book, and the movie appears. So it's a great way to extend older books, it's a great way for the kids to show the movies to other kids, and the kids love it. They come up to the library, they'll scan it, either do you want to read War of the Worlds, or do you want to see something else about protos? Any questions? You can sign up for next lift to save subscription, no? Yes, sir.
I guess the one question I have is, I see the videos, I see the, you know, what the students have learned. Can you just describe briefly what the, what the learning process looks like in the classroom through all this? You know, how does the lesson start? The video, you know, how do they present the video to the class, what type of questioning and is going on there? Just bring us inside the classroom.
So far, first time through, you guys made a movie. Day one, we work on scripting. Talk about what you need, what help do they work, children will compare, develop the script. They also provide some ideas of what kind of pictures they might like. Katie and I do some preliminary work, looking for photos, digging the background, but they always want more. Day two, you'll type the text. Day three, we'll start to put the pictures in. Day four, you will meet with the teacher, who I always called the executive producer, and then we'll go through your movie, and that's the time we encourage the teachers to do the grading for content. Those don't buy pretty quickly. If I said to you, were there five facts in there, were they all correct, it's kind of hard to pick up. So on day four, we're fine-tuning, putting the credits in, helping the kids with the movies. The executive producer is also meeting each pair and conferencing, providing their total support. And day five is red carpet, where we show everybody's movies. So if you didn't learn from protos, they're involved in marshmallows. After you saw your classmates' six hundred movies, I'm sure you got marshmallows and ice cream and red tide. So that's it on a first day. Now, the second time we do it with you, we can probably knock a day off. You've already done it already, you're familiar with it, maybe we get you to write the script more at home, because now you know what you need. We've tried the scripts at home before, and if they've never done it, they get there with all this work, and it just doesn't fit. We've found it's better if we do it in class, so.
Good, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Did any of the students use their own technology to develop this, by bringing in devices to work on this, or do things on their own, download them in classrooms, anything like that?
Part of the problem with iPads is there's, the storage is on the iPad. So if we'd started the movie with you, and I gave you iPad number thirteen, and you come in tomorrow, you need to get thirteen, because that's where your movie is. So if a child had brought them, we did this in the middle school, where the BYMD is not that developed yet. So if you had brought yours in, I would have to have you bring it every day so that you could do it. That's kind of, we've got very good bookkeeping, making sure you get your movie back the next day. It's not like we're doing on a computer, we can store it remotely and get it back. It doesn't work that way.
Could they use Edmodo for some of the storage as well? Upload their videos to Edmodo and access it from home?
Um, they could not do that, no. Our kids can't download videos, so the best we've gotten so far is, talk to me about what you're looking for, and I can help you find pictures, or I can help you find video in class.
Did you, did you mean the iMovie program itself? No, I mean like if they start working class, and then they want to go home and work on it some more, could they just upload it to Edmodo, work on it at home, bring it, you know?
You could, but it would be rather cumbersome. Probably better spend your time, if you can tell me what you're looking for, and I'll help you find it the next day. Yeah, it's not quite as easy to transfer. Some things really work. Makes phenomenal trailers. Other things, it's a little, there's no thumb drive, you can plug in and say, oh, I have it.
So these are five class periods?
We've done it in five. First time through.
And then, does that, does that take a week, or a month like that?
Oh, no, week, oh, no, no. Listen, I get you all excited on Monday, I show you the movie, I'm not going to wait for a month for you to have your debut.
I didn't know if you came in once a week, or you do.
No, I've been making movies like full-time since January, it seems. Tomorrow, I'm doing something else, so that's kind of okay. Danny McCarthy's class last week, we started on Monday, did it all through Friday, we showed the movies. She wants me to come back, but probably, if she wants it the second time, I probably won't even have to go, unless something changes in the software, because now she knows how to do the movies. I might show up, I might stop in, I'd love to see the kids work. They always want to show it to me ahead of time, it's like, no, no, I might use a big screen. And I want to see, I want to see it, and we use, Katie has a big TV in the library with great sound. I've had some teachers bring Pop-Tart, you know, so, no, we really have to consolidate. The other thing is too, is we think about, everything lives on the iPad, so let's say I let you, I do it one day a week, I have to keep track of that iPad, make sure to get it back for you, make sure no one's in there doing pictures in between. So we do the whole thing, and then today, I took all her movies off, deleted all the old pictures, cleaned them all up, and they're all ready for the next, the next go-around. Now, so it's a short term.
Barbara, how many iPads do you have that access to the new?
In the middle school, we have about twenty. But even if you do partners, like in class last week, we had some trios, I had love not yet, but I needed them six periods, I needed them Monday through Friday, so I really tied up those eleven for the entire week.
It works better in partners, too, I think we found, because it works better in the sense that someone else is checking your spelling, your grammar, that it makes sense, there's someone else to think of, how can I explain that in a picture? So I think it works well in partners.
Well, too, we're trying to teach collaboration. And sometimes, I had a child today in a special place do one by himself, partner was absent, it worked out fine, would have been better for their partner, I'm not sure. You know, we've done trios, they're not as much fun, three is hard, there's always that odd number. Partners work better.
When I went to school, we had the overhead projector with the plastic, wrote on it, and it showed up on the screen.
Katie, I'll use a wonderful thing. Well, thank you for having us, and I hope.
That's great.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. DeSantis.
Any questions, I have a question for the board.
We're good.
Okay, and the correspondents, everybody should have received both the technology and the monthly maintenance report. Anybody have any questions, concerns, of any items on those reports?
Very much.
I will move down to the approval of minutes. Everyone should have seen the copy of the regular and executive session meeting minutes of February 5th that were posted. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, changes?
One correction on page fifteen. The committee report should read Mr. Baltham and Mrs. Backer.
Okay.
I have one other one, it was on that one. This one's more of a question. When we did that resolution, we didn't have it in front of us, or you read it to us on page, well, the resolution is on page sixteen, number two. It says, and, the sentence isn't finished, is there something missing?
No, then it goes, and, then it goes to where at?
But there's a T. No, page sixteen, number two.
I'll leave it there.
Is that you see that?
No, the T should not be there.
Oh, so it's just, so it's not a sentence missing, the T is just a type.
And then number three.
I make a motion, the minutes be approved with the corrections noted.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Baltham.
Yes.
Mrs. Backer.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Sayak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rapoia.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes, our student council representative, Tony, what is going on around campus?
Currently, student council is preparing for the annual say no to drugs trip. This program involves all of our student council members, and is dedicated to educating all of the students in the district about the dangers and adverse effects of recreational drug use. As role models, we'll also be teaching them effective ways to say no, in addition to what they should do if they see a friend or a family member make a poor decision. Through this program, student council hopes to create a safer and healthier community for many years to come.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Mr. Vice President, we got the district highlights, can we please read them?
The Crayola Corporation, the Geraldine R. Dodge Foundation, and the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association are proud to announce that Emma Arlett School is one of six New Jersey schools to be awarded the New Jersey Creativity Leadership Grant for two thousand thirteen. The school's creative leadership team has developed a program entitled IC, which is a visual and graphic arts program for the children, teachers, and parents in the Arlett School community. The program will use the lens of a multimodal design thinking to brainstorm, prototype, solve problems, and create new ways to deliver instruction, and incorporate the common core standards into everyday practices. The purpose of IC is to further develop Arlett School's mission to become a multiple intelligences school by developing our students' understanding of the curricular areas through the multiple entry points of the brain. This award is a further extension of Arlett School's national award from Crayola and the National Association of Elementary School Principals in October two thousand eleven. Arlett School shares the distinction with one other school to be the first to achieve creativity awards from the Crayola Corporation on both the national and state levels. Several War Memorial High School seniors, Victoria Parides and Elizabeth Agivon, from Ms. Jennifer Lascalas Art Workshop Advanced Art Classes, have been chosen to represent Middlesex County at this year's Youth Art, Youth Art Month exhibit in Trenton, New Jersey. Out of all the entries submitted throughout the county, both Elizabeth and Victoria's creations were chosen. Overall, there were a total of six students from the entire state chosen for dishonor. Elizabeth and Victoria will be recognized in Trenton on Friday, March one, two thousand thirteen, and their artwork will be on display. Congratulations to both of these high school students. Congratulations to the Cerval Memorial High School Boys Bowling Team, who won Group Three State Title and the Tournament of Champions State Title, finishing the season as the number one ranked bowling program in the state of New Jersey. In the Group Three portion of the tournament, Jason Sajewski bowled three hundred, two fifty-seven, and two thirty-eight for a seven ninety-five series in the state finals. This performance was record-setting, and would include the highest game in our program's history, the highest series in our program's history, the highest game ever at the state finals, and the second highest series ever at the state finals. Jay was one strike away from setting the record. In addition to these incredible accomplishments, the Boys Bowling Team won the following titles for the two thousand twelve thirteen season. GMC White Division Champs with an overall record of sixteen oh and two, GMC Conference Champs, winning the tournament undefeated, champions of the BRIC State Tournament, champions of the Westfield Warren Wheeler Memorial State Tournament, champions of the Joe Romer Memorial Baker Challenge Tournament, champions of the Snowball Classic State Tournament. And that's a program that we started, by the way, with one or two bowlers basically bowling individually under Mr. Weinert's tutelage, and it's basically grown over the years into this outstanding program. And I give the boys a lot of credit, and I give Coach Weinert a lot of credit as well for the way he's, he's expanded that program. We are also so proud of all of our students, but we would like to take this opportunity to give a special thank you to the members of the Cerval War Memorial High School Bomber Boys Basketball Team. In the aftermath of Sandy, the basketball team really came through for the town of Cerval, and specifically, a single mother on Miller Avenue. During this time, many of, many people in town were helpless and had no one to help them clean out the debris left in their homes from the hurricane. At this point, Detective Bellotti from the Cerval Police Department put out a call to help for this Miller Avenue resident, whose house was devastated by the storm, to help in her cleanup efforts. Because of the Bomber Football Team was working on their state championship title, the Bomber Basketball Team jumped right in and immediately reported for cleanup duty with Detective Bellotti. Coach Wolchik and his team arrived bright and early, and had her home cleaned up in no time at all. These selfless young men will be honored at a future Borough Council meeting, and we couldn't be any prouder. Congratulations and a heartfelt thank you to Coach Wolchik and his team. And finally, congratulations to the High School Bomber Cheerleading Squad. They have competed in four competitions and have come in first place in all four of them. Great job, girls and coaches, good luck at states and nationals. Congratulations to all of those impressive honorees.
Thank you, Mr. Sayak. Dr. Afan, can you please take us to your report, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Section one, buildings and grounds. Approval of use of the high school for the Stardust Musical. Any questions with section A? We're done moving to B, finance. The first twelve resolutions are our regular resolutions. Any questions with those resolutions in section B, finance?
I'm abstaining from number eight.
Please make a note of that, Mr. DeAndrea.
And Mr. DeAndrea, I'll also be abstaining from the chapter of American. Dr. Afan?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. DeAndrea, check number one, two, five, six, two, four to eighteen T, long distance charges for October to January. I thought we were going to go with light pad, which.
We had those, those are some of the lines that we still had trouble with converting out of Verizon. I have over six, close to six hundred emails back and forth from us to Verizon trying to cancel all these lines. This is hopefully the last of those lines from eighteen T at this point in time. Verizon has just been a disaster to try and get lines converted. So it's, it's an ongoing process, and still trying to negotiate the final payment with them for the, the cabs that we disconnected. So we're a year and a half after we removed ourselves from Verizon, and still, still cannot finalize their final billing, so it's an ongoing process with them. So as we resolve each account, we're trying to pay them and get them out of, paid off and everything else.
Okay, we have no other questions. Moving to C, personnel non-certified. There's a resignation, an unpaid medical leave, some professional days, and a few new employees. Moving to page five, number five, there's a few more substitutes, non-certified. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to D, personnel certified. There's an extended retroactive employment of Ms. Delafin, as well as retroactively the extension for child re-leave. Number three is the employment of two new replacement teachers. And there's also a, number four, a retroactive appointment of a ELL teacher, and retroactively approving Ms. McGaw as the new custodian of school funds for the high school. On pages six, seven, six and sevens are professional days that are being approved for the teachers and staff. An appointment on page eight of a girls' track assistant coach, Ms. Tala. A few coaches, unpaid, listed on that page as well. A substitute. And numbers ten, eleven are our New Jersey ASK three, four, and five tutorial teachers, and New Jersey ASK seven and eight teachers, as listed. Number twelve is a individual for nurses list that we need so desperately. Any questions with section D?
I have a question. Dr. Afan, why are there different sessions for the different teachers? Like in Arlett, there are twelve, Eisen, twelve sessions. For Eisenhower, there are eighteen.
It depends on the number of teachers work in the program. So the eighteen would be, because there's only two teachers working as opposed to some of the other, which sessions are working.
It also depends on the amount of children in the program as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving to E, no pop, there's no policy. F, it's our bullying, intimidation, and bullying reports, thirty-nine and forty, special services placements, et cetera, which is listed on page ten. And number three, on page eleven, is the Summer Enrichment Program, which is a, a very viable program that runs through the SUES, and Ms. Obrich does a very nice job being its director. I believe this is the seventh year, eighth year? Eighth year of doing that. And it started at really a couple of grade levels, now I believe it's K eight. And hopefully, we get a few more children this week. Last year, I think we had about thirty or forty. We're looking to get some more, and hopefully, the program is an excellent program, does a real nice job. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to G, co-curriculum. Coach Bingo at Wilson, be there. ASI Family Night at Samson Upper Elementary School. Kindergarten Rocks at Wilson School, sounds like a pretty exciting couple of weeks at Wilson School. Week training, fitness competition at the high school, not sure if I want to be involved in that. Eisenhower Family Reading Night, Middle School Community Service Club Sixth Grade Dance, Eisenhower's International Festival rehearsal, Family Movie Night at Eisenhower, Samson Upper Elementary School Art Show, which is always one of the best. It's usually a very nice evening. And finally, the banquet for the high school football players, as listed. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, support services, wave, some transportation, as listed, approval of one retroactive trip, as noted, and four high school trips are, are asked for approval, as noted, and two board buses for the conferences are listed as such on page thirteen. That concludes, that concludes my report at this particular time. Mr. Mackinon, I would like to dismiss the, the children, they got to go home, they got a big test tomorrow, and Ms. Martin said make sure they get home around eight o'clock. So I'm doing my due diligence, I'm giving them permission to be dismissed, but next week, you don't have the luxury, actually, in two weeks. You have to stay to the bitter, and, right, usually not that long. So it's nice having you guys, we really appreciate you coming. Hopefully, you took some real good notes. We will see you next week, because Mr. DeAndrea, myself, Ms. Eigner, and Mr. Egles come over to the middle school, and they ask us a bunch of questions about, a little bit more about what happens here, as far as the Board of Education meeting. So it gets a little bit more specific, so we go over to the school, and I'm very excited.
approving Ms. McGaw as the new custodian of school funds for the high school. On pages six, seven, six and sevens are professional days that are being approved for the teachers and staff. An appointment on page eight of a girls' track assistant coach, Ms. Taller. A few coaches unpaid listed on that page as well. A substitute. And numbers 10, 11 are our New Jersey Ask 3, 4, and 5 tutorial teachers, and New Jersey Ask 7 and 8 teachers as listed. Number 12 is an individual for nurses list that we need so desperately. Any questions with Section D?
I have a question. Dr. Fann, why are there different sessions for the different teachers? Like in Arlitt, there are 12 sessions. For Eisenhower, there are 18.
It depends on the number of teachers work in the program. So the 18 would be because there's only two teachers working as opposed to some of the other teachers. Which section do we work?
It also depends on the amount of children for the program as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving to E, there's no policy. F, it's our harassment intimidation and bullying reports, 39 and 40. Special services placements, et cetera, which is listed on page 10. And number three on page 11 is the Summer Enrichment Program, which is a very viable program that runs through the SUES, and Ms. Obrich does a very nice job being its director. I believe this is the seventh year, eighth year? Eighth year of doing that. And it started at really a couple of grade levels. Now I believe it's K-8. And hopefully we get a few more children. Last year, I think we had about 30 or 40. We're looking to get some more, and hopefully the program is an excellent program, does a real nice job. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to G, Co-Curricular. Coach Bingo at Wilson. Be there. ASI Family Night at Samson Upper Elementary School. Kindergarten Rocks at Wilson School. Sounds like a pretty exciting couple of weeks at Wilson School. Week Training. Fitness Competition at the high school. Not sure if I want to be involved in that. Eisenhower Family Reading Night. Middle School Community Service Club Sixth Grade Dance. Eisenhower's International Festival Rehearsal. Family Movie Night at Eisenhower. Samson Upper Elementary School Art Show, which is always one of the best. It's usually a very nice evening. And finally, the banquet for the high school football players as listed. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, Support Services. Wait some transportation as listed. Approval of one retroactive trip as noted. And four high school trips are asked for approval as noted, and two board buses for the conferences are listed as such on page 13. That concludes my report at this particular time. Mr. Mackinon, I would like to dismiss the children. They've got to go home. They've got a big test tomorrow, and Ms. Martin said make sure they get home around 8:00 o'clock. So I'm doing my due diligence. I'm giving their permission to be dismissed, but next week you don't have the luxury, actually in two weeks. You have to stay to the bitter and usually not that long. So it's nice having you guys. We really appreciate you coming. Hopefully you took some real good notes. We will see you next week because Mr. DeAndrea, myself, Ms. Seigner, and Mr. Egles come over to the middle school and they ask us a bunch of questions about, a little bit more about what happens here as far as the Board of Education meeting. So it gets a little bit more specific. So we go over to the school, and I'm very excited about my confidant, who's going to be Dr. Fann on next meeting. She knows more about this than I do. Good luck, ladies and gentlemen. You may leave. You may be dismissed. Parents, thank you very much for bringing your children.
Please stand corrected. Your clipboards and pencils.
Miss Brady needs her clipboards and pencils. You don't keep them. It's only after the next meeting that maybe you'll get them. It's $5.95 for the clipboard.
You may come to the center. Bring me your signed clipboards and pencils. Thank you. You can take the paper. Give your notes.
I get the paper. Wait, somebody forgot Mrs. Backo.
And Mrs. Trapp.
And Mrs. Trapp. Don't forget Mrs. Trapp or Mrs. Backo.
Thank you. I think they have... [inaudible]
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, there's no more discussion agenda. Anybody in the public want to come up and ask any questions or any comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and...
I'll make a motion to approve the shipwrecked evidence report.
Do you need a second?
Second.
I need roll call.
Mr. Bunka?
Yes, Mr. Bunka, noted.
Mr. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishala?
Yes.
Mr. Brzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes, with the extension of it.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukia?
Yes.
Mrs. Pratt?
Yes.
Delegates of New Jersey School Board?
Just very briefly, the only item of note to report is Wednesday, March 6th, is our Student Recognition Dinner at New Brunswick High School. Two students from every school district in Middlesex County are being honored. If you're interested in attending, please register through Mr. DeAndrea. There is no cost. It's picked up by the Association of School Administrators. Wednesday, March 6th, New Brunswick High School, 1,000 Summer Street. So it's a very nice event.
Okay. On the discussion, any committees meet? Finance, you guys meet sometimes?
No.
Okay, we had a redistricting committee meeting earlier today. We're going to meet again to get some more information about some of the options, I think, some of the concerns centered around how Slover's school factors in, and how that's a player, how we're going to make that transition, and some good questions were asked about costs associated with that that Dan had asked last time. I don't have an answer for you right now. So we need to press on with the budget, and then we'll be cognizant of that as we move forward. So no decision is being made right now. We're going to get some more information, and then we'll come back and talk about it. But the meeting did have all the administrators. Some very good points were brought up, and I thought it was very productive, more food thought, and we will continue as we get some more information about particularly Slover's phasing in and how that's going to work. More to follow on that.
Mr. Mackinon?
Mr. Syak?
On that item, I've got some information to share, and I'll give it to you to share with the committee, but I also wanted to share it here publicly. As I understand the challenge with this, I think, and one of the principals said this to me, and I happen to fully agree with the analysis, I think if we were starting a school district from scratch, you know, K-5 or K-6, or maybe even K-8 would probably be the model that we would go with. Because, you know, the longer you have a continuum of education in one school building, the better it is, assuming, again, that those schools don't get too large. And I think the challenge that we have here is we're trying to rebuild the airplane while it's already in flight. In that, we're trying to perhaps look at a model of K-5, but we're going to end up with a building that was never meant to be a K-5 unless it was going to be a very large K-5. So one of the things I called from the Department of Ed website is the listing of all of the elementary schools in the state of New Jersey. The largest elementary school is actually Henry B. Wilson Family School in Camden City with a whopping 1,712 students. I took an average, the average elementary school size of all the data that I gathered is 436. There are 152 schools in the state that are 700 and above. There are only 86 that are 800 and above. So if we end up with a Samson school that ends up being an elementary school with more than 800 students, we're going to have a school that is one of the top 5% largest in the state. When I looked at our school sizes, you've got Arlitt at 441, and keep in mind, these numbers might be a year old because the Department of Ed website lags behind here. But we've got Arlitt at 441, we've got Eisenhower at 548, Wilson at 349, Truman at 465. So at that time, and again, this stat may be about a year old by now on the website, the average was around 450. So we are slightly above the average in the state in terms of our average elementary school size. So I wanted to pass that information on to the committee, because I don't know if you've looked at anything from a statewide piece. The only other two concerns that I have are, number one, I think we need to come to a decision soon, because as I talk to people in the district, in particular the staff, they're concerned that this churn just keeps happening, and that, you know, we're really not going anywhere, and the biggest thing that a board can provide is vision and direction. Obviously, it has to be the right vision and direction, so we want to make sure we make an informed decision. But I think we need to get there as quickly as possible. The second piece that really concerns me is the fact that none, at least as far as I know, in speaking with Dr. Fann, none of our administrators support making the change to a K-5. Now, I just took a promotion at GE. I've got 15 sites rolling into me. If I went out to make a change and I had all 15 sites say to me, Kevin, don't do this, there's really only two ways that I would proceed with it. Number one, if I really don't have any faith in the 15 people that I have, in which case I've got a bigger problem than just the decision that's before me. Or if I've got enough data, experience, and information that I absolutely know beyond the shadow of a doubt that this is the right thing to do. And if that's the case, then I need to bring those 15 people in. So what I would encourage the committee to do, and I saw it here tonight, we had the administrators came in, you know, you guys met, then they left, then the committee met. I think this decision needs to be larger than just the board committee. I think we actually have to bring maybe even some teachers, administrators in together with this committee, all as one unit, and make the decision together. So it's not a board decision or a committee decision. It is an administrative teacher-board decision. Because ultimately, whatever we decide, they're the ones who have to implement it, and we're going to need that buy. So that's the information that I wanted to share with the board. Again, it's only my personal observations, but I'm just really concerned about where this is going, and felt I had to share that.
Well, nothing you said I disagree with, and a lot of the points you made were discussed in the room, seeing especially about the creation of a school that would be unmanageable in population. The problem we have here in Cerval is we have some very quaint elementary schools that were embedded in communities. That's the way it was designed, and we have this school 700 St. Road that's very large. We have an infrastructure problem, and that's one of the things that we talked about. And I agree, that comment was made, that if we had started a school district from scratch, we would configure it with something like a K-5 or older grade than that. And that's the issue. I'm not an indecisive person, but I've gone both ways on this thing. You're absolutely right. We've got to make a decision. We owe it to the administration and the staff. As far as bringing teachers in, we did that over the summer, I think in August, we had teachers come in, elementary school teachers, and provide different as well. This is a big decision. It's probably the biggest decision this board's going to make. It's bigger than moving the election. It's bigger, has more consequences than that, I believe, as well. So we want to just get a little more information about. I think we all agreeable that whatever we do, Slover is going to factor in. Slover's going to have to open. And I think tonight the issue was, how do we open Slover? How do we phase it in? How do we populate that? And we've tasked Mr. DeAndrea to get some information for us. What is the population that currently exists in Morgan? Because one of our board members, committee members, it was Phil, has mentioned that it's not going to be a very good community school if you don't have kids in the community going to, and that's one of our concerns. So we're trying to get that information. And I agree, we need to, within the next two weeks, resolve this issue. So we need to get that information and meet again as a committee. But everything you said, I don't want you to think that we're a bunch of foyagus out there.
No, and again, when you say, you know, over the summer you invited, you know, teachers in...
But that was over the summer. I get you.
Right, and I'm not just saying, I'm saying I think that those teachers and those administrators need to be an integral part of the committee and the decision-making process.
Oh, they're going to own it. Sure, I agree. Yeah, and we're doing that. We're moving in that direction, and we're going to come to conclusion here in the very near future. And this is good information. If you can email this to me, if you have it, so I can share it with the rest of the committee.
Yeah, that's the 700 and above. I'll send it to the whole...
Right, this is the form. I've seen this. Okay, all right. You could just...
Mr. Mackinon? Yes? I wanted to discuss this, and I told you I'd hold off till tonight from the last meeting about redistricting. I just sat down and I, over a period, a couple of weeks, I've been doing a little research of my own, what financially it's going to cost the district to open up Slover. All right? If you'll be patient, I'm going to read some numbers, be okay? What I've done here is I've gotten a K through three, three classes each, which comes out to be 12 teachers, and that comes to be $720,000. These are new teachers, because we're not, that's what we would need to get into the district. We're going to need a physical education teacher, an art teacher, a music teacher, a librarian, a nurse, at least two custodians. We're going to need a school principal, possibly one and a half or two full-time secretaries. We're going to need at least four paras full-time, two, four part-time paras. And I didn't even figure in any special education teachers yet. And just the numbers and the staffing that I just rattled off comes out to be $1,560,360. All right? Let's go a little bit further here. There's not enough students in the Morgan section of town to make that a neighborhood school, so we're going to have to use busing. Let's go a little bit further into it. To supply the school with the necessary materials such as books, supplies, remodeling, both the cafeteria, the gym, the elevator, and setting up the tech that needs to go in there, it's going to be in a neighborhood, I estimate, over $2 million of cost just to open up that school. One of the issues that, I've done some other research on a K-5 program. First of all, the transition, instead of it being two, it'll be two transitions instead of three. A K to five, which is the first, and the second one would be to the middle school, and then to the high school, it'll be three instead of being four transitions. The benefit of a K to five system would be the stabilization of the students for a minimum of six years. They'll be in the same environment, familiarity, less peer pressure. Parents can have multiple children in the same school. It's a better learning experience because the children are going to be together for a longer period of time, and we can also have a better control of the class sizes. Now, another issue that I looked at also, and it's been brought up over several times, about moving the borough, moving the Board of Education offices, possibly to the senior center, the upper level of Washington School. This comes under what I call the Shared Services Act thing. We have to look ahead, very simply, because in 1970, and a lot of people here remember this, we closed Roosevelt, we closed Lincoln, and Washington Schools, which eventually wound up going to senior citizens, which we'll never get back. We have to better use our facilities, and another issue that we can do is we can move the pre-K to Slover, which consists of 98 students. That can be four or five classrooms as a beginning, and I am all for revitalizing Slover, but to open it right now, financially, I don't think the district is going to be able to afford it, number one. Number two, I did a little other research. New Jersey has a state unemployment record right now of 9.6%. 7.6% nationally. The budget that comes due in June of this year, June 30th, is going to be, according to the legislative office, of over $2 billion short. So the thing is, what do we do financially? And do we do the best thing for our students? That's what I have to say about that.
Well, I think whatever configuration goes in costs money, and I would dispute some of those costs, because if you repopulate Slover, you're repopulating from students that are other schools, so those teachers would come with them. So you're not going to hire 12 new teachers.
Well, again, all those things need to be worked out, Tom. Would you, what you just quoted was the worst case scenario if we opened up a new school and added staff? Well, I'm not. What I'm doing, Mr. Mackinon, is being on the Budget Committee, I asked and I received a copy of the student enrollment in all of our K programs right, our K through three programs right now. And the highest right now is the kindergarten at Truman. The second highest is third grade at Eisenhower. And, you know, there's a possibility of between 23 and 20 students per class here, you know, it wouldn't hurt to possibly add a maximum of 25 per classroom, which could also help out as far as future ideas going forward.
We will take all that into consideration. We have, we've talked about those things. Utilizing our current infrastructure would mean utilizing Slover. We have a school city name we're not using.
No, it can be used. Like I said, we can go to back to a pre-K, rebuild the school, because we still have a lot of limer that is going to come in. We also have the point, which is going to be eventually coming in with, as I quote you, was eight students, they believe, told me, out of a 2,000 family unit development.
You're absolutely right, man. And whatever we do, the point's going to...
You know, and, you know, one of the other issues that I have an email from when Land was our architect, that to put an addition on any school, this was in 11, I really didn't look at it lately, but I remember the numbers, to build an addition onto a school today is between $200 and $300 per square foot for an addition to a school. So, I mean, you know...
I'm not going to construct anything.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm giving you some facts that you, on this committee and your members, along with the administration, can study.
Yeah, we understand, Tom. We're looking at it. Matter of fact, we talked about some of those things. And those are the things that Mr. DeAndrea is going to provide us, and we're going to meet again in the near future and solve the issue. We got to. You know, I don't want to keep delaying the decision until it becomes irrelevant, so we have to act on it. So I will agree on that. Okay. Any other committees meet that I want to, where? Okay, and then we're going to figure out a curriculum committee date, is that what I heard? And you said the 25th? Sorry, I will give an answer. So if you just send an email out, it's all reminded. I'll check my schedule tomorrow. And we got to knock that out as well. Okay.
And Policy will also be meeting in the next week with regard to the corporate sponsorship policy. I've got a draft from Seattle, which actually is very good.
Okay. All right. On the discussion, I guess we've got some good news. 2013 bond refunding. Can you explain what we did and what the result of that is?
Last week I sent out to the board, we did our bond refunding on the, basically with the bonds that were outstanding for the Cerval Warren High School. And the results came in, and we have a net savings of close to $2.2 million on their bond refunding. So it was beneficial. We hit the market at the right time. We worked with some great consultants, and the bond refunding, overall, as I shared with the board, all four bond refundings have netted us close to $3.8 million in savings. And I use savings as the term, but it's really...
Since you're not, you're not going to pay.
It's money that we're not going to pay, so...
And we knocked the term off the...
No, we haven't shown the term. Everything still goes to 2031, but it's a considerable amount of savings in debt service that we're seeing. And it's just a part of what's happening in the market. We hit it at the right time, and things have worked out well, so...
I don't know if you know the answer to this question. Will we actually see a decrease in the tax levy associated with debt service year over year, or will it just be less of an increase? So you haven't looked?
It's less of an increase.
Less of an increase, okay.
The budget, Finance Committee had numbers, and these came in after I sent the numbers. The first year, we're already looking at $117,000, less than what we would have made this year. So it's not really a savings because you didn't pay for it, so...
But compared to last year?
$117,000.
Less than last year? All right, so then the tax levy portion on debt service would actually go down?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at, the bond refunding, and I believe this last refunding, there's a possibility in the future to refund again.
That was my question.
But the likelihood of the rates dropping down to the numbers that we just saw are unlikely to occur, so...
And this is locked in at that rate?
Yeah, everything's locked in, so... But it was an interesting day, listening to the analysis of how they did it, and they had to adjust certain bonds to get people interested because they weren't selling well, and it's... The first year, we're already looking at $117,000, less than what we would have made this year. So it's not really a savings because you didn't pay for it, so.
But compared to last year?
$117,000.
Less than last year? All right, so then the tax levy portion on debt service would actually go down?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at, the bond refunding, and I believe this last refunding, there's a possibility in the future to refund again.
That was my question.
But the likelihood of the rates dropping down to the numbers that we just saw are unlikely to occur, so.
And this is locked in at that rate, decided?
Yeah, everything's locked in, so. But it was, it was an interesting day, listening to the, the analysis of how they did it, and they had to adjust certain bonds to get people interested because they weren't selling well, and it's quite interesting to hear what they do on the other side of this.
Was it only the high school bonds that said that?
That's all that was left to be refunded, because we refunded all the others.
So you can't refund anything else anymore, they're done?
Right, right, there, there is a potential, I think, in another five to eight years, I don't remember offhand, to do the high school ones again. There are certain times that they become qualable, but at the interest rates that we're currently seeing, it's highly unlikely that you're going to see it again.
Now, we still got out there the high school, the UES, Barlet, is that done yet, or no?
I would have to look, because we've refunded so many, I'm not sure which one is which.
Gotcha.
I have in mind, since they're all refunded, it's 2006, 2007, '11, and '13.
Okay, so it doesn't tie back to the.
Right. They do at some point, but I believe it's a mixed match of all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, you did a good job on that issue. At this time.
Hold on, Mr. McEnam, I've got two items that I want to.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Number one. Number one, on 9/14, when we go to the 130 credits, again, I started doing some research, it's about the safety and security here at this facility. The high school parking lot has 443 parking spaces, out of all those, 154 are for seniors' parking spots. Two-thirds of the senior class gets early dismissal, which is roughly around 266 to 270 students. Traffic on the senior grounds, when we implement this for full day everybody, you're going to have senior drivers, you're going to have buses, you're going to have parents picking up students, it's going to be chaos, to be perfectly honest, what you do to the campus and the flow of traffic on it. Now, again, we allow, or we're allowed to have some of our students park over in Kennedy Park. I don't know if anybody's been through here after 1 o'clock when the early dismissal takes place, because the students and the drivers coming or going into Kennedy Park just walk across in front of any traffic, the students coming out of Kennedy Park just pull out and drive across into the campus. I mean, you know, there's issues that have to be addressed if we're going to protect them. We also have to address the idea of the juniors getting their car, their driver's license, and parking either in Berks Park or parking over in Kennedy, creating more problems at 2:28. Are we going to have school crossing guards at this early dismissal at 2:28? We're going to have police directing traffic on, onto and off of Washington Road. And don't forget also that the middle school gets out before the high school, I think it's around 2:15 or something like that. It's, we're going to create a lot of safety issues, as far as I'm concerned, for the district's students and the parents when you have a greater increase of traffic flow and students being dismissed at the same time.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, the next. That's not a reason not to do academic.
No, no, I'm just saying, but these are things that are going to have to be addressed. We have a year and change to address it. What I'm, what I'm asking for is that the committee that's going to do this comes up with a solution, either all off, off-school parking for the seniors, or, you know, what are we going to do, you know? Because again, it's going to be chaos.
I guess you asked me, what is the concern about parking?
Well, the issue is, you have 100, my numbers are here, there's 154 senior parking spaces. They drive their cars to school.
Yeah, there's less parking spaces than there are seniors.
Correct.
Right, and they, they bid for them, I got you.
Right, but what happens is, you're creating 154 more vehicles on the school campus at 2:28 and thereafter.
But they're already in top of the mall. They're all coming to school.
They're coming in at different times, not everybody getting out at the same time. That's the issue that you're going to be facing. Also, you're going to have parents picking up their students. You know, what we're looking at is traffic chaos.
I can summarize what his problem is.
Okay, please.
The way I understand it, the issue is, we are now going to have 154 cars leaving at 2:30 that normally would have left at 1:00. So there's going to be a higher volume of cars leaving the school.
Correct, that's only on campus.
Sounds like a police problem.
But then there's Kennedy Park also to deal with.
But I would think that we could test that next week, when the students get out half day for parent-teacher conferences, correct?
We do that every.
We do a lot of that.
I, I know, that's why, I mean, I.
And this, it's a, it's a.
So that's the worst-case scenario.
It's a busier time of the day, late in the afternoon.
Right.
Because of the.
And the last item is, this is a liability issue that I don't think the board should be put into anymore. We're allowing, we're allowing religious groups to use our buses to transport worshippers to and from their site of the religion services are. The issue that happens here is that, God forbid, a bus pulled out in front of a tractor-trailer coming down the hill, and the bus was struck with these people on it, or whatever, wherever they were. The liability and lawsuits that would initiate against the district, the other issue is too, that people getting on these buses can trip and fall, again, creating a liability for the district. I particularly would rather see if you're going to have people using the parking lot provide their own bus services to take away the liability from the school district.
They pay for the bus.
We pay them to.
They rent the bus.
For mileage and for the bus driver to transport these people to and from whatever religious service there may be.
So you're talking about from the parking lot of the middle school to.
Well, whatever, I'm not going to single out one group, I'm going to say a religious service.
Thank you, Tom.
A religious service.
We do make a profit off of that, correct?
Yes, I would rather not comment, because I really would have to see all of their paperwork and have it in front of me. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
I know they pay for the buses, I know, because we see it, we see it on the.
Right, but I think they only pay for the drive.
They pay for the drive, they're paying so much.
I would have to see all of the paperwork that they submit.
I haven't seen it, I've been agendaing a long time, did we do it this year?
Last year. Last year was in March, I think.
In March, so it would be coming up like next month again?
I would have to check, I, I don't have the answer.
Okay. Is that, that's all, Tom?
That's it.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open for the public, for any business that may come forward, if you'd like to make any comments, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Ms. O'Connor?
Good evening, Fran O'Connor, 84, Weber Avenue. I just want to address a few issues that have evolved since Hurricane Sandy. As you know, the borough of Sable was completely devastated by Hurricane Sandy. Unfortunately, there are still hundreds of homes that have been so badly devastated that the homes remain uninhabitable. And as a result, there are scores of families in Sable that are now displaced. You know, when the storm first hit and we had to be evacuated, many of us tried to stay as close as possible. We went to family and friends and stayed in local hotels. But as time went on and we realized that this was going to be a long-term situation, we were forced to find other alternative accommodations, and we had to find places to rent. And there's some families that were fortunate enough to be able to rent in the borough of Sable, and there's many families that unfortunately have been required to find rental units outside the district. You know, when you lose your home and all your treasures, it takes a severe emotional toll on us as adults, but on our children, it is a drastic toll. They've lost all their belongings and they've lost their home. And sadly for many of us, it's the third time in three years that this has happened. We need to make sure that we keep normalcy and security for our children, because their security has been so upended. The Commissioner of Education for the State of New Jersey, Mr. Christopher Serf, had issued a memo on November 5th, 2012. The memo was intended to provide guidance to districts whose students were displaced by Hurricane Sandy. And the request in that memo was to make sure that the districts were placing the students' best interests in mind. The Commissioner referred to displaced students as being McKinney-Vento eligible. McKinney-Vento is a federal regulation that addresses the needs of homeless children by allowing the children to continue in their school of origin for the duration of their homelessness, even if they become permanently housed prior to the end of the school year. Commissioner Serf further indicated that the districts should arrange for transportation needed to allow the students to remain in their school of origin. I need you to keep in mind that when we had to go find our rental units, we had to sign leases. I had to sign a one-year lease. In some situations, the renters were kind enough to put in 30-day termination clauses, others were not. But not only were we required to sign a lease, but in order to obtain FEMA eligibility for housing and rental assistance, you have to sign a lease. So that's an important issue that needs to be addressed. Over the past three and a half, almost four months, the entire town has rallied around all of us, and many people in this room have given untold hours, and we sincerely appreciate all the things that you have provided and donated to us. At this time, on behalf of the families that are displaced, I would like the board and the district to address the issue of the long-term care that is going to be needed to provide to these students who will be out of district and remaining in the school system, as well as the transportation issue for those students that are out of district and need to be transported back in. Something needs to be addressed to help those families, particularly those that are out of district, that are incurring the additional cost of still paying their mortgage, their taxes, and their rental unit, as well as now having to transport their students back into town. I don't know if there is already a public policy in effect. I did attempt to find that information out, but I, I did not, I was not able to obtain that information. So if there is something in effect, I think it does need to be made public. If there's not something in effect, I think it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran, for bringing something. I know, Fran, that you, again, were at ground zero in this storm, and I know for the last couple of years, you've been the pillar of strength and the leadership behind your community in getting things done to the state and municipality. Back in December, I tried to get my. Back into the schools, there were three students that had permanently transferred out of the Sable schools, and, you know, kind of just disassembled. And then there were 33 students that were living in other towns that we were providing transportation for. And I don't know, I know a lot of this in an emergency, state of emergency, a lot of the rules are waived and the law and that kind of stuff, but what is our current situation now, two months after that information?
I don't have the exact number, that we are still transporting from out of town, but we are still.
Now, when we say out of town, if a student goes and moves 30 miles out of town because they can't find out, I know everybody wants to be as close as you can, but they have 30, what is the limitation or risk?
We can provide transportation, we are providing transportation. Right now, I mean, it changes all the time, because people are moving back, or they're moving from one place to another. We are providing transportation to a number of students, I could get to the distances that we're going.
Yeah, we can find from.
I, I have that information. We, as part of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act, the definition of a homeless person is that they, and I don't have the definition right here in front of me, but it's basically that they don't, that they're in some kind of transitional housing, they're living with family members, okay? I have gone to the state to see what kinds of other, if anything, has been waived due to Sandy. According to the person I spoke to at the state, that's not true. I asked, I left a message for someone else last week at the state, who's going, supposed to call me back, and to just clarify that, that once you have a lease, that you are considered no longer homeless, okay? We, as far as, I know a question had come up concerning reimbursing people for driving their children to school.
Right.
That, there are very, very strict regulations concerning that. Parents have to have a million-dollar umbrella policy, they are looking to waive that down to $500,000 policy.
To transfer their own kids?
To transport their own children, and we could then reimburse them. But we, we enter into a contract with a parent to reimburse them for transportation. As it stands right now, they must have a million-dollar liability policy.
But can we use, and I'm not faulting you, because I know you're, you know, you're engaged with regulation, but do you use some common sense to say that's a Sable person and that we can just do that? You know, sometimes it's easy to repent in extravagancy on some of these things.
Unfortunately, if there was a problem, you know, if, if there was a problem while a parent was transporting their child, they're looking to have, to lower it to $500,000, the requirements for the liability policy. Some districts have put in for a waiver request, once it's, according to the gentleman at the state, it's on the fast track, once again.
Oh, that could be three years.
No, no, he says within the month, they expect.
But you're telling me they need a million-dollar policy to take their kid to school, but to take him to shopping at the mall or something that's okay?
No, no, for us to reimburse, for us to reimburse them. But it's, so, you know, our, our hands are tied here, really intriguing.
Now, the thing about signing a lease, if, they're homeless if their home is gone. So if they sign a lease in another town because a landlord wants a lease, I'm going to come back to Sable next year, but I got to sign a lease now, but why would that exclude them from transportation simply because they signed a lease?
Because they are no, they are not considered homeless. What allows them to be transported under the Homeless Act, okay? In some cases, we allow the children to continue at school here, which normally, if they had signed a lease someplace else, you would say, you're no longer a resident of Sable, so you cannot attend school here anymore.
But this is a, a situation.
And I understand that.
And what happens if we did do that? It's like somebody come in and arrests Dr. Alcuna, what happens if we're found taking care of our own people, saying, look, yeah, we understand what the rule is, we're going to use common sense, because we had a flood of mammoth proportion, and we're going to do these things for our people. I understand what your regulation says, but the regulation was written, it wasn't written for when we have a superstorm. So, you know, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just saying, it defies all common sense to me, that we would have people that reside in Sable, have all their intentions of being in Sable, and they lost their homes, and so now they're living in Craftville, let's say, and we can't transport them because they signed a lease? I mean, that, that defies all common sense.
So they can't tell us that there's a lease?
Yeah, don't tell us.
We don't, we're not telling.
No, no, we, you know, I mean, that's.
So you're saying everyone that we are transporting, you know, has not signed a lease? Is that?
From, most of them, most of them are living with family members, and we have signed affidavits.
But how, what is your policing process? Somebody says, oh, I signed a lease, or somebody is silent?
We have signed affidavits, I mean, there are certain questions that I ask them, they have to come in, they have to, I meet with them, I talk to them about what the situation is.
So you have met with all these 150 students' families?
With the families, yes, yes, I have met with all.
And contacted them.
Yes, yes, I have met with all of them.
Now, what if they signed an affidavit saying that they had intentions of coming back to Sable, that this was actually temporary housing?
By, according to the regulations with the Homeless Act, that they're not considered homeless.
But they would have to sign a lease to live.
No, if, if it's a one-year lease, it's very specific. Like I said, I don't have the definition of home, I can certainly send it to you tomorrow. I've been in contact with the state and talked to the state, I've talked to the person at the county who works for the state about this, I've talked to the person involved with the coordinator for McKinney.
Look, you, you're doing what you're supposed to do, to keep the board and the legal discipline. But I'm thinking, if I was sitting here talking to the governor, and I said, "Governor," he would use some pretty interesting adjectives to describe how stupid that is. So my point is, I like to know.
But it's, but it's Mike, it's not only, it's not only, we're getting information from the state that's telling us we cannot do that. When we call them, they say, "No, do not pay for transportation."
Why would the state care?
Because we're trying.
Who's saying we transport?
I'm just, I'm just telling you that it's not only that we, we're trying to get guidance from them, they're turning around saying, you know, and then they don't, some of them return your calls, some of them don't, but I know you just sent me an email that basically said, "We called the state," and this gentleman, lady, I don't know, I don't remember what it was, basically said, "No, you're doing the right thing, this is not what we would pick." I agree with you, Mike, and we're, it's absolutely.
We're doing the legal thing, we're not doing the right thing.
But I don't know, but I don't know if we can.
But can you ask that person and say, "Are we permitted to transport them if they sign a lease under these circumstances?" Because if they're not going to get FEMA aid without signing a lease, everybody's going to be.
Well, his response to that was, "How do I know they're coming back?"
Okay, well, part of the answer to that is, we still own the homes that are displaced.
No, no, not this person, not this person that we were talking.
There are some people that are renting.
No, you're right, Fran, you're right, it's not this person who's renting. And you're right, I'm not...
So if one of the people...
This was a renter, right?
Right, one person was a renter, another person does not want the transportation, only wants to be reimbursed, okay?
Yeah, well, this kid could be picked up at the state.
Right, right, only wants reimbursement. When I explained...
It's a different story.
Right, right, so...
I'm okay with that.
So, you know what, Mrs. O'Connor had called me a few weeks ago and I said to her, I said, "Have, every case is individual and unique. I have to talk to the people and see what the circumstances are of each individual case." I mean, we are transporting people, we're doing our best to work within the constraints of what we can do. One parent in particular who wanted to be reimbursed.
I understand that, but, you know, the storm happened after the school year started, so we had some kids that are enrolled in school, all of a sudden this storm happens, they lose their home, which many people did, and now they relocate somewhere else and they sign a lease. Now we're saying that that student who's getting bused to a school can't be bused now because their parents signed a lease. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And I can't see why the board, who has, who deserves responsibility, has said, "You know, that's a sayable resident, we're going to go ahead and pay that." And then when somebody comes in and says, "Well, you violated that," I say, "Oh, okay." And?
Well, there's two circumstances, Mike. The first is the one that I got involved in. The lady was a renter. So even though once she signed...
She's okay.
But I'm saying, once she signed that lease, she doesn't own property here. I agree with you, and somebody else, the other gentleman owns...
But what if she's still paying taxes?
She's a renter.
Well, renter here, she was a renter here.
I'm sorry, she's a renter. She didn't own property, she was a renter.
The problem with that is you're still not thinking about the best interest of the child. Because if a child, especially someone that is a junior in high school, that has gone through the Saraval school system and through no fault of their own have lost their rental unit and has been placed by FEMA in a rental unit that's outside the district, they should not be penalized for not being able to be transported back to the school.
It makes so much sense to me. Look, could we find this out? Can you update this information for me?
Sure.
And I'd like to know if there are any of those people that are stuck in that limbo? It's a couple, okay. And what we can do to help them? I can't believe that with our resources and out of the town, that there's a small number of people, three or four people, that we can't do something. Look, I'm not the one that's one side, held all the rules and regulations, but I think they're there for a reason, but when you have a freaking superstorm coming in, all that stuff's out the window, it has to be. I mean, it doesn't make any sense that it wouldn't be for something simple, and this is not something that's going to break the bank. And this is an issue I had, because I spoke to somebody, I spoke to the mayor about these things, and it just, you know, I've always said this, we in education are a service organization. That's what we do, we provide a service. And I'd just like to see if we can put our hands around this. And I know we're always interested about open Pender's box and we sent this president, but this is a unique situation that hopefully I only see once in my life. And I toured your neighborhood and I toured the Williams Street area and I've seen some stuff other places, this is bad. And this is, you know, look, and I'm, look, I'm not saying you're doing the job, you're protecting the district, I get it, understand, but it seems to me that there's got to be some wiggle room, just, you know, Fran, if you run into something, I probably shouldn't say this, I'm on TV, say, "Don't say you signed a free lease." Yeah, I'm living with some parents, this is a freaking address. You know, I mean...
And that's what, you know, like I said, every case is different, every circumstance is different and if people call me, talk to me, I mean, we'll see what we can work out.
And every case may be different because people have different, you know, unique situations, whether they're renting or buying, but the fact is, there does not seem to be a written policy or even...
There isn't, there isn't, because this is a very unique situation. You know, and if I lost my house and I have all these issues I have to worry about, the last thing I just have to worry about is my kid in school, that's the first thing. And we talked about this when we were in the emergency center during the storm, was the first thing for normalization is get the kids back to school and get them back into some type of routine. And I agree with you a hundred percent. And I know I'm at odds here, but when we solve this issue, I want the information, I want to know who these people are, what the issues are, and if we can do something, it just makes sense to me.
I would just like to see you take the interpretation of transitional housing and apply that to even those that have been forced to sign leases, and I think that would probably solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Mr. Sager, I'm going to have Dr. Feinsa from New Jersey School Boards contact you tomorrow too, because it sounds like a Department of Ed problem, maybe other districts, maybe they've found a way around this, or maybe he can help us broker a solution.
I am, I am working with them at the state and they...
Yeah, well, if you spoke to Dr. Feinsa, just tell him, tell the Department of Ed, let the districts handle it. The districts, you figure it out and solve the problem.
Even if they put in place a one-year moratorium that allows districts to deal with it on their own, that would help.
Mr. McInum? We're a superpower, you know, we should solve this problem.
Yes, just a quick question. Are we paying for some of our residents' children that are out of district? Are we paying their tuition in another district, just anticipating them coming back, like say, a monthly fee?
No, we are not at this time. Anyone who's living out of district, as part of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act, there are two options. If the person, if the child is considered homeless, either we could, they could go to school in the district where they are currently living and Saraval would pay tuition, or we would pay tuition, transportation to bring them back here. We are not paying tuition to any district. We are, anyone who is currently living out of the district is coming to school here in Saraval.
Now, we had six students that relocated to Saraval after the storm.
Yes.
They, they paying tuition from another district paying us, or they're, they signed a lease and I guess now they're with us?
Right, they signed a lease, they're permanently with us, so...
So they're Saraval residents?
Yes, yes, we have another homeless situation or two where we are billing another district for tuition, but it's not, well, actually, we do have one related to Sandy that we are, that we have students who are there.
Oh, if you can update this information for me so that I can...
Sure.
You know, if the mayor asks me, I have some, you know, recent current information.
And we're, like I said, we're still transporting many people. Mrs. Shabroch just gave me information about, you know, what are transportation costs above and beyond have been and later on.
Right, and I know we can request reimbursement for FEMA, those things, if we have the records on that stuff, right?
Transportation did not qualify.
Okay, we are, we are, we are, we are looking...
I tried.
I did try, but we are looking to get some reimbursement from the homeless.
So you have like a statistical sheet of a hundred and fifty students that are displaced, how many left the district, how many were transporting, how many have housing here? So you have that.
Yeah, because I have extra information in December.
Right, so you have an updated one and you could send us?
Yes, I have one that's been updated as of a few weeks ago, you know, and we do, we have students who, you know, were living over in the Weber Avenue area who were going to Wilson School and they're temporarily living over in La Mer. So we're transporting that child from La Mer to Wilson School.
Right, those are easy ones.
Right, right, but we are doing a lot of transportation.
All right, I just, I, sometimes I get, I like to solve problems and there's only some, only some government agency in the way that says, "You can't do that," when I like people to tell me how I can do it.
And we are, and I am continuing to call them at the state and emails, I had emails going back and forth on Thursday and Friday, still trying to get some answers to clarify and see what we can do.
Do you keep up on any housing information, like if there, do you have access to that? Like if there's rentals available?
I have put, I've put some people in touch with, you know, yes, certainly, we see and through the Homeless Coalition, we have information that we give out to the people, you know, to people where they can contact to get help with the housing, I mean, it's been tough.
No, but do you like keep contact, like say in Skytop? Do you have a contact there, like where you would know if rentals were available, if any of these people used to do that?
No, no, early on, when, right after the storm happened, we did have a few contact people and we did give out the names to some of the people who came in, if they were looking for a place, I did give them that information, but...
Update, you know, as soon as you can.
Yes.
Thank you. I left off the pump that was open, Ms. Kilcombs.
How did you know I wanted to speak?
Just intuition.
For her, Kilcombs, twenty-two Chisholm Street. To reiterate, transportation, I see many times that we reimburse if people, or parents rather, opt to transport their own children to private schools, one being an assemblyman, which I was surprised, six-hundred-some dollars we gave him for his students who attend Rutgers Prep, but we're giving him transportation money. And here are these people, I think, that are in real need, that there has to be exceptions to the rule and to get around it. And I think we have to be more open to it and more compassionate to these families that really need it at this time. The other thing is redistricting. I hear all these statistics and everything else and it drives me crazy to see a beautiful school, which we, the taxpayers, paid twenty-eight million dollars to renovate, and the Samson School, and a whole wing empty. I think it's up to the board to represent the parents and students, and I don't think there should be that much input of administration, because many times administrations don't want to upset the apple cart. But right now, the board is elected by the taxpayers and by the parents, and they should have the most aid. Now, the last thing I heard was when you had the redistricting meetings, everything was fine and all the parents were on board and they all agreed to this, K through five. Now all of a sudden it got stopped, certain people weren't even invited to meetings or whatever, and now it's, well, what the administration seems to be directing. And I don't think the direction should come from the administration, it should come from the parents of the students and the taxpayers, I'm sorry.
Well, the administration isn't directing, as a matter of fact, I called Dr. Alphano earlier in the meeting, said, "K three, K two-five, tell me what you guys want to do."
I'd like to know how many towns have an upper elementary school?
I'm in.
I think you said three, right?
Three in the whole state of New Jersey?
I think you said it. It wasn't you?
Not many.
It was you said it?
Not many.
Somebody said three.
I mean, it's a good concept and all, but I agree with the parents to say they would like continuation of a K at least through five. We have a middle school and a high school, and it should be K through five. But to see a whole wing not utilized and you're worried about overcrowding, you should have thought of that when you added on the huge addition to Samson School. But to have a whole wing not being utilized, that's not in the best interest of the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Sager.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public who can speak? Anyone else in the public who can speak? Yes, come on up, ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
Suzanne Green, seventy Woodmere. Just from my own experience, I grew up in East Brunswick, K to five, six and seven, eight and nine, high school was ten to twelve, loved it. It was great. The schools were still K to five, you had your junior high school, your whatever middle school, and then your high school. So it's just another option, you do have enough schools to do it. You know, if you wanted to make Slover, Eisenhower, Arlith, Truman, whatever, K to five, and make, you know, Samson, six and seven, and the middle school, eight and nine, and then the high school, just an option to think about, you know. Everybody that I know that goes to East Brunswick, they love it.
Thank you.
Just an option.
Anyone else in the public? If not...